So, everybody, welcome to the freshwaterways advisory board meeting. Today is seven February, it's 2:00 PM, and I call this meeting to work, okay? So, the first thing on the agenda will be row call. So, let's see here, we have Phyllis. And Pam. Grant. Gray. John. And just so everyone knows, even though today was Joe Kubachek's last day on the board, I knew he wasn't going to be attending this meeting, okay? So, and he did not, if you remember, he did not reapply, okay? And then, we'd like to welcome our new appointed city council liaison, Eric Noble. Thank you, Eric. Okay, and then also our guest speaker, we have here the city finance director, Angie Folkers. Thank you, Angie. Okay, now for our guests. I know a couple, Tom Kinsey, Jim Golden. And, name's your name?
Mary Jo Simon.
Mary Jo Simon. And, name of your name?
Anna Bettencourt.
Emma Bettencourt?
Anna.
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 Anna, I'm sorry. Okay, and your name?
Mary Amber P.
No, Mary.
How do you spell your last name?
G E H R K E O N.
Okay, and your name?
Gloria Kobe.
How do you spell your last name?
C I G A.
And your name, sir?
Sam Kobe.
And your name, sir?
I've just come here to listen as an assistant, so I don't want to give my name.
I see. And your name, ma'am?
Nani Bacon.
And I know that you weren't at the last meeting, but I actually did answer your question with that.
I heard about it.
You heard about it?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, and let's see, we have Don Williams on the line. Anybody else know Bob and Carol?
We have phone number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Bob and Carol Rose, thank you. Alrighty, anybody else, sir? No, okay, perfect, thank you. Alrighty. So, the next will be the approval of the minutes of our January 3rd, 2022 meeting. Those minutes were sent out by Pam Huland, the secretary, on Sunday, January 9th, 2022. So, first, let me ask, do any of the board members have any requests for changes? No? Okay, so, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to accept and approve the meeting minutes as written. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Phyllis, do I have a second? Grant, and all those in favor, aye? Aye, alright, any no? No? Yeah. Okay, so, the minutes from Monday, January 3rd, 2022 are accepted, okay, and approved. Alright, so, for old business, we don't have any old business, right? And new business, we have just two things, first is Angie Folkers, second will be our list of priorities. I'll hand those out, we'll talk about it a little bit, but it's really more for the next meeting, this is just sort of a pre-person for that, okay? Alrighty, so, without further ado, Angie Folkers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I know you've been asking me to come for several months now, but I wanted to wait because I was working with the city council on doing our mid-biennial budget modification, and there were things relating to our storm drain fund that actually affected my presentation today, so I wanted to wait until we wrapped that up before I came and spoke to you, just so I could tell you what is the latest and greatest as of right now, as it stands. So, I, it sounds like Nick has previously been here to kind of give you an overview of how, how the fund is set up, and it's all captured in the city storm drain fund, Fund 438. But it sounds like you might want a little bit more detail on how that pertains to this group.
Yes.
As it, as it pertains to spending on freshwaterways. So, so far, as you know, our, our storm fund is funded by storm drain rates. So, the council has done some work on that over the last few years. We've done two rate adjustments, starting back prior to 2021, our rate was thirteen cents for each 400 square feet of property. 2021, council raised that to eighteen cents, and then in 2022, they raised it again to twenty-seven cents. And there was some push behind that due to the fact that there's been a huge public outcry about needing to get stuff done with our freshwaterways. So, you know, we took that into council, council listened, and we did a rate increase to, at least start. It's a start, it's not where we need to be necessarily, but it's, it's something. So, what council did do, out of the, we do a two-year budget, so out of the $2.4 million storm drain budget, about $415,000 is actually what is going directly to, you know, the waterways, as far as spraying, weed harvesting, and now we're doing the Oihut Creek Waterflow project. So, it's a small chunk, again, it's something that I think we need to, to do more with, but kind of the discussion that we had with council was our public works director was leading. We were talking about hiring an environmental specialist, but we don't have a job description, we don't know what our new public works director will want to do, we still don't have one, we're advertising still. So, we kind of put that on pause. We basically, with the funding that was approved for 2022, it left money in the budget to potentially hire somebody, and that money is just going to sit there and help council decide what to do with it. So, hopefully, that'll come up as part of your budget process, and I like your priorities, I like that. So, each August, we start asking the boards to come to council to talk about what the priorities are, so that can either, it's not in August, it's September. So, by then, hopefully, you will have a list to bring forward to the council. I know you started doing that at the end of last year, and then it was kind of, again, put on pause because there were so many moving parts within the public works department, and the rates, and not really having a plan per se at that point, so. But between these two line items, the council did transfer some general fund money, $200,000, into the storm drain fund to work on the Oihut Creek Waterflow project. And I know that that's been underway, then meeting with all the environmental groups and trying to figure out what to do with the Luminos and, and whatnot. So, I know they're working on that. And then that left about $215,000 for the actual weed spraying. And that is going to be weed spraying done in 2020, because we didn't get the invoice till 2021. And then it'll include the 2021 weed spraying, which we have the invoice for, that we need to pay, which is about $60,000. And then that'll include this year's weed spraying as well. Council did add $45,000 for mechanical weed harvesting as well. I believe Mick thought that was going to be about $15,000 per pass, and he expected to do about three passes on that, so. Again, it's, it's starting somewhere, who's getting the start on this? But as we go forward in future discussions, we're going to be, the council will be looking towards the board to come up with priorities and recommendations, a plan. Hopefully, when we get a new public works director soon, they can become part of that. But the upcoming budget is going to be pretty critical for you to get your priorities out there and to council, and figure out how we want to move forward, because obviously, it's important to citizens, it's important to board, it's important to us in the city as well. So, this budget's going to be really impressive, and I'm excited about it, so. Are there any other questions? I, there's not a whole lot of detail to go through, there's just only a couple line items in the budget pertaining to what you guys probably care about the rest of it, it's like salaries and taxes and things like that.
Well, so, one of the big things that not just us as the advisory board, but we hear so many times, or ask this from residents, is where can I go to on the budget and see what pertains to freshwaterways?
So, if you go in the budget, I'm trying to figure the best way to do this, I brought my budget book for that reason.
And one of the things council did approve, if I remember correctly, is that they had approved a specific line item for freshwaterways starting 2022?
There is, so there's, in, in the fund, there's a professional service aquatic weeds management line item. So, that includes all the weed spraying, and it'll include mechanical weed harvesting. So, that's the $215,000 that I was talking about.
Okay.
And that's in the, if you guys get the monthly reports, or go look in the monthly reports on the city's website, the expense in Fund 438, you'll see that we have a maintenance and ditches category within the fund, and that line item is actually in there.
Under the maintenance and ditches?
Under maintenance and ditches, yes. I can actually keep one of the whole code, I can give you that?
Yes.
Alright, this, this is good. You want to talk about bars codes? It's under 438, 673, 030, 531, 00, 41, 01. And then, right under that one, we do have a totally separate line item for the Oihut Creek Waterflow project. That one was significant, in our opinion, because we were transferring general fund money, and we want to be able to track that really clearly, really precisely. So, that was directly under that one, if you're looking at the.
So, for the Oihut, it is under this bar?
It's under the one, right underneath of it.
Oh, okay.
And it's the $200,000. Yeah. Does that help with that?
So, well, so for this, so there's one that says the professional services treatment, and that includes almost everything that we do, we do the, any kind of treatment, or what, for the weed harvesting would be under this, so the $45,000 that city council approved is all under this particular.
It's clearly labeled a aquatic weeds management. So, it'll be the $250,000. Mine is the $60,000. Yeah. It'll be $215,000. So, we ended up having to pay the 2020 bill, like I mentioned as well, so that was $47,150. And then the 2021 bill is $60,550. So, what's remaining right now for 2022 spraying and harvesting is $107,450. And we were estimating the 2022 spraying to be $62,450, and then the mechanical weed harvesting to be $45,000. But I think we might be on target for the, the weed spraying, if last year's was $60,000, so.
Now, one thing to note is, is that, I know one of the things we're going to have to start talking about here is, is that weed harvesting. And I'll probably add it for next meeting, I need to do a little bit of work and talk with Marshall and see if maybe he has some info, but for you, Angie, just out of curiosity, did Nick happen to pass anything to you for that weed harvesting? Any information that he had received from a potential contractor?
He did not, all I got was his budget note, which was, he said, he anticipated that we can initiate one week of effort per approximately $15,000 per trip with three trips expected. So, he said that it's like mowing your lawn, and expectation would be to conduct one trip at the beginning, one trip in the middle, and one at the end of the growing season.
And one of the things that we did discuss, and just so if you see it come this way, is, is that Doug Dorland, the Northwest Aquatics, might actually be doing the whole thing, he could be doing it, and then have a subcontractor that does the mechanical, and then his report would include all of that, but I know that he was wondering how that would be, his current PSA does not include that. And I know, I, I thought maybe he and Nick were going to take care of that before, but I think it happened. I'll, I'll talk to him.
Okay, sounds good, yeah, he can reach out to our purchasing coordinator as well, because it's, when you have them subcontractors, then it's prevailing wages and other things like that that you have to worry about, so there's more documentation, there's more stuff we have to file with state, instead of just a sole proprietor, so, but he can work with our purchasing person, he knows.
Alright, so, what I'm going to do is I'll go ahead and just open it to the board members, if they have any question for you. So, Phyllis?
I'm, I'm good.
You're good?
Just how much money is left? And no, it makes sense to me.
I'm going to explain a lot, thank you.
Oh, good.
Grant?
Oh.
No. Great.
Thanks for lending.
Thanks for being here, I'm good.
Wow.
Wow, that was very good, right?
Hey, so, Scott, can I just ask a question of the board from the council, because we've been kind of directed to be a little more engaged with, with our liaison reports, and so we're going to kind of be, you know, answering to the council on what you guys are talking about, and then bringing the council to you guys, so there's a little more synergy in, in the recording, and I'm just curious to know where the board is at, you know, because when we were talking about it last year for adding the environmental specialist, is that something that you guys are still focused on that you would like to see move forward?
Well, it's, I, when we had initially prioritized this list, there was already among the board members of exactly what that position should look like. We all agreed that somebody needs to be there, but should it be an environmental scientist, an environmental specialist of waters? But, you know, those kinds of things, right? And it is probably going to be discussed pretty heavily next meeting.
Yeah, and, and so when you're discussing it, just also understand that it's the, it's, it, it's, that position will kind of oversee all of the storm drain issues, so insurance, because that's the main part, but it also, as we saw with the flooding and everything else, there's a lot of issues, so, it all kind of ties into one.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that was a, many, Nick and I had many conversations about this, and I talked with all of the board members individually, and he also had into, well, he came to all of our meetings for almost two years, right? So, I think we all get that, one of the things that we do, that we really are trying, and Angie is definitely a key part of what I'm trying to do, we've had many guest speakers, and the point is to educate the public.
Yeah.
So that the public understands that the waterways are part of the storm drain pillars, right? So, absolutely, I mean, because I, they all go hand in hand, right? So, it shouldn't be just one person going out there testing water or whatnot, so much more to it, right? Absolutely, okay, thanks, anything else, Eric?
Eric could speak to the fact that the council was supportive of it, and, you know, on the premise of having a new position, it's just, we just need more work to get to what that's going to look like, and especially with the new public works director, we're just, we just don't really know how that's going to go yet, so, but yeah, it's.
But it makes sense to hire somebody that can build the whole, you know, and as people are asking about the budget, you know, it's always going to be in the storm drain, and then line item, about a little bit more than that, but, you know, you need a professional person that can work with the city and storm, and then, you know, freshwaterways to build the whole thing, because, you know, hiring a couple worker bees would be good and nice, but who's, you know, or you got, you know, it's kind of hard to supervise those people, so.
That's right.
The city needs a plan, everybody wants, but somebody wants a plan on how are we going to do this?
Yeah, we have a good start.
Yeah, we have a really good start, yeah.
Well, and I can tell you, after the many conversations that I had with Nick, and even in his office, I seriously felt that the public works director was not the right person to oversee all of this, and I certainly hope, Eric, that council sees that, right? I mean, there has to be a dedicated person to do that.
Yeah, well, Nick was really pushing this, and so I think most of us agreed with Nick to do that, and so we just want to make sure that keeps moving forward.
Moving forward, it is.
And stuff like that.
Yes, sir, it is. Well, that actually is a good segue into a couple of questions that I have, Angie. And so, when you were talking about the other line items under that particular bars, was, is that under that one bars? Is that also where the line item is for the salary for an employee, or are they under a completely different one?
The, so the employee's salary is not in the budget right now. Basically, we have $437,000 sitting in the ending fund balance. So, the rate increase that they did accommodated for another position, but we didn't know what position to add. So, we just left it out, and said we would come back to that later. So, the money's just sitting in the ending fund balance of the storm fund right now, until, like Eric said, council can work through what that's going to look like. We need a position description, we need, just to figure out a plan for the staffing. The money's there, we just need to do the work to actually get it in the budget, and a job description out, and all that.
Is that where it would go if we had one, or would it be in a completely different?
It'll go under, in the storm fund, under that maintenance and ditches salary, there's salary, there's salaries, there's benefits, everything in there, so.
So, again, anything dealing with, I mean, I did its overall storm drain fund, but anything dealing with what folks that are worried about the waterways, right, that's what they're focused on, is going to be under this particular bars, this, these line items, right? Anything outside of that is not.
Yeah, and the other stuff's just general office stuff. So, yeah, I think your focus right now is on the two line items that we talked about, but then, once we get a position in, obviously, the salaries will roll into that. So, as we continue to grow and come up with a plan, it'll, it'll all be outlined in the budget under the maintenance and ditches category.
Perfect.
Can I, Eric, is the council looking for the advisory board to give a job description, assistant in that job description of an environmental specialist, other than just, you know, the public works director?
I, I mean, I, I think, you know, what I would think would happen is the new public works director would start on it, because obviously, there's a lot outside, but then work with you on the freshwaterways, so, I think that's what Nick was planning on doing anyway. But that would be up to the public works director, it's, you know, the council, I don't think, needs to see that specific job description. I mean, we can, and I know a lot of people would like to see it, but because it's going to be underneath the public works, I would assume that that would be their purview, and, and we're thinking, you know, so, I can bring it to you, I think, the public works director, but would definitely work with you on what you'd like to see it to be too. But I don't think, we're not bored to come up with that job description, that would be public work, so.
Yeah, it would be public works director, and then, the council has shown some interest in seeing that, where they add the, the specific position to the budget, so I'm sure it'll, it'll get to that point at some time, but definitely going to solicit your feedback, I'm sure when it hits, we're going to have a brand new person in there, so.
Yeah, they're, they're going to, they're going to want to know what is it?
Yeah, exactly, they're going to be sitting in the seat.
And so, the next question I have, Angie, is, is that there is a piece of equipment that was used by the Ocean Shores Freshwaterways Corporation that did water testing, right, temperature, pH, and things like that. That system was owned by the city and on loan to the corporation. So, with that in mind, is where can we find, if there's money to buy a new one, a new one's about $5,000?
There's currently no money for a new one.
Okay.
You could add it to your council request list, so, this summer.
My priorities?
Yeah, and then we would add money to the budget for that.
Okay.
Which would be in 2023.
So, out of the 107, that is strictly for maintenance type work, not to buy any kind of equipment or anything like that?
Yeah, currently.
Alright, if we had suggest, if the advisory board were to suggest in the future that the city should purchase some type of mechanical harvesting machine, nobody get worried, I'm just asking, right? Is, where would that be, this?
We would set you up an equipment line, most likely, so we would set you up a new line item for that. At any time, too, you can work with your council liaison, and he can run stuff up through the council for you. So, if you find a need where we need this now, not in 2023, you can always talk to Eric, and Eric can take it to the council, and council can obviously add it to the budget during the budget.
Just to get budget amendments, that, Angie does quarterly anyway.
Yeah, so we would just add it to the list of things to adjust, so you wouldn't have to wait till 2023.
Okay.
The big stuff that you can plan for is probably best to wait until you're actually doing your budget for the upcoming biennium, but if there's stuff that pops up or stuff that breaks, we get it, we bring stuff to them every meeting, so. You would just ask Eric to, to help you out with that, and I'm sure if it's of minimal cost, council would be more.
Five-dollar dollars is not a big deal.
Unfortunately, the machine that we was using is so out of date.
Yeah, yeah.
And there is no more updates on it.
Or even a capability.
Kind of, kind of like the 1971 road breaker.
Yeah, so the 29-year-old library siding that we're going to talk about soon, so, I mean, stuff comes up, and we understand that, but he would be your first point of contact.
Okay, alright.
And, so you don't necessarily have to wait, if it's inexpensive and you need it now, I would, I would.
Okay, perfect. Alrighty, well, I think that does it.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, we're, we're done.
Why would I, I'm just going to state it here what the priorities are.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, well, I should, I should have brought another copy, but I can send them to you.
That one.
Okay, well, Angie, thank you very much, that's very much appreciated, and, and definitely a great interview.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so, next is our list of priorities. Is that what everybody's here for? Is it a list of priorities, or, no? Alright, so, what I wanted to do with this is, this is what we had all approved some months ago, and then I had presented to council. And, as you'll see, the very top thing, I think, has actually been completed, answered. But what I wanted to do is, is I just kind of wanted to figure out how you guys want to move forward on a couple of things. One is, I, as we discussed at the last meeting, I don't like the name of, that the city needs to do more. That's too aggressive for me, I, I just really don't like it, the city has done a whole bunch, especially on the finance side, and so, I, I, I just don't think it needs to be that. It should definitely maybe be our list of priorities, I kind of wanted you guys to think about it, because this isn't, this is something that I hope, even when I'm not chairing the future, that the next year, we carry on and keep going and keep going. So, if we could kind of come up with what is a good title for this, and in that way, council knows what, what we mean when we use that term, the residents know what we mean, there isn't any ambiguity with that, so I think we need to title this correctly, right? And then the second thing is, I wanted each of you to take this home, go line item by line item, really think about it, think about all the meetings that we've had, especially today with the finance director giving us the education on the money and all of that, and reprioritize for you, what do you think? From one to, I think, a total of 14 priorities at this point. And just within the next two weeks, maybe three weeks would be great. If you give me a call, I'll come and pick it up from you, or you can just drop it off at my home, whatever's easier for you, and then I'll put all those together, we'll average them out, and at the next meeting, we can discuss that. But what I wanted to do, since we have so many folks here, right, and Angie staying, I wanted to just go over and list them, right? Alright, so, the note, the first one that we had was separate funding line within the Storm Brain Utility Fund 438 for freshwaterways, lake management, and future projects. I think that that has definitely been answered, right? The second one was city council staff crews with the freshwaterways advisory board of freshwaterways corporation. Number three was the IAVMP, okay?
I don't know what that means.
And so, the IAVMP is the Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan. Now, that is a project that we've been working on with Public Works. It's going to cost, and the money's already there in the budget, about $60,000 in order to have a contractor come in and do this. What's important about this is, is that there's many grants that, if we wanted to go out and get a grant in order to do any kind of treatment of the, of the many different kind of weeds that we have in the freshwaterways, or we wanted to do some sort of project, and IAVMP, this plan is required to be updated before we are even considered for a grant. And IAVMP, this plan is required to be updated before we are even considered for a grant. Now, we actually lost out on trying to get a grant for the parrot feather last year because this was not up to date. So we. Two years, thank you, Louis. So we've had to treat for the freshwater, we've treated freshwater ways, basically Lake Menard and a little bit of the Bell Canals. For the parrot feather, that is part of this sixty thousand um invoice, the sixty thousand dollar invoice for this year that Angie was just talking about. That all, just for the parrot feather was roughly five thousand dollars, right? Just for that one weed, it has to be attacked a certain way. And in intervals and all this stuff. So the IAVMP money is there. And and you know what that is, right? You've heard that IAVMP before?
No.
No? Okay. You have, yeah, okay. Um and so that is something that we, as soon as we get a new public works director, that uh he. Uh that person and I will will uh have to really start working on that quickly. The next project, North End Grand Canal Project. Um I'm going to uh get rid of that, get it completed, but I think we all get it, that that Northern Grand Canal Project. Um and and actually, I think I'll probably have it off uh after meeting later in a week or so with Eric. Cause I know that this is a project that's very important to him as well, and he and I can get on the same sheet of music for that.
And it's been years.
Uh it has been. Um the next is the buoy system. Needs to be, uh needs buoys replaced and proper placement prior to twenty twenty two voting season, if you remember. Board members, um and I think maybe Jim, you might have been here for that, was uh when we had Deputy Chief Watson here, then had explained that the. Uh the public works had purchased ten new buoys to be put into the water and we will be working with him. I'll probably send another email here in a month or so and ask, talk, start talking about anchors and things like that and. And ways that that we can help him and the other officers get them in the water. Okay, so we're we're moving along with that. Uh well, their vote is, um I think that some money was approved to help them fix.
We're working on it, yeah, should be done by August.
But ideally, really, I mean, and even after talking with Deputy Chief Watson, I mean, the police vote is is very difficult for them to try to get buoys in and out of. So that's probably more of a corporation and corporation members, we can talk offline about that. Okay, the next thing was the survey of residents, waterways management, what do they want? Meaning, you know. What do the residents want to s- do with these waterways? And what do we wanna see? What is the way forward? Next was shoreline management, um things such as agreements between the city and construction and excavators. We were talking. About um having seen uh for many years in the past where excavation is done down to the waterline on waterfront properties. Which causes significant erosion and other issues, right? And I have to tell you, you know, I live on the Grand Canal, plus I'm always out on my boats. And I've seen hmm uh over the last year, um many properties that have been excavated and they're not taking them down to the waterline anymore. So that is a good thing, both Greg and I. Although Greg and I also have been out and we've seen where residents are on their own program. Um doing things and well, that's such as bulkheads and docks and buffer zones and things like that that residents. Need a little education on. Um next is lake recreation management. Um next was everything, oh. Yes, uh weed management for twenty twenty two. I think we can probably start moving that into twenty twenty three. That was more so about. Can we get money for a a tryout area of the uh mechanical harvesting? And thank you to council, the city, that they authorized the forty five thousand for us to try this. And to figure out what kind of logistic nightmares we're gonna have uh with it. We already know that they're gonna be there. We just kind of wanna see uh what we're really gonna deal with. Uh next was the resident education program, um you know, what I just kind of alluded to. And uh one of the things that we uh had talked about was contracting Alexa Brown, who is. A uh environmental specialist. She is the director of the Grace Harbor String Team. She came here as well and gave us a really good education. Um and that's really kind of up her alley, right? You know, she does a lot of it for Aberdeen and Hope Wham. Um on the Chehalis and the other rivers that they have in those areas and uh that seems to work very well. Uh for those residents on on those watersheds. Um and then um. Well, next we have the uh full-time uh employee. Uh for our city staff, we've talked a lot about that this meeting and this will definitely be a very hot topic going forward. Okay, lake management restoration study. And I if I remember this correctly, I'm not exactly sure why this kind of ended up so far down on there. Maybe it was the money or some other issues, but. Um the lake management restoration study is again getting a contractor to come in and do this study. Now, um I've done some uh research on on many of these studies, even looked at one that was done in the Maple Valley area. And uh they have a great comprehensive plan for for their uh area. And one of the big parts of that lake management study was the uh resident study. Uh you know, and they had working groups and opened it up and listened to what the residents had to say and then put this all into a plan. And uh I thought it was very comprehensive and very well done, but that's just a night, you know, uh of what I'm talking about. So again, something that would cost money to have a study done, come in. And it's a whole comprehensive thing. They do soil testing, water sampling, all kinds of figure out the weeds, deal with uh our our entire history, right, you know? Um and also the life cycle of the waterways, you know, uh there is definitely a life to this and what do we have to do in order to do any kind of. Filtration of the soil or remediation and things like that. Uh and last but not least was the future projects. Um and one of the big things, and I actually kind of remember this from Don Williams, when he had mentioned this once before. And I wrote this in there, was the Stormwater Master Plan. And the Stormwater Master Plan has been, is it, it it has not been?
No, that's what we need to do it really, really bad. That's why I think it could incorporate what you were just talking about, it's all the same, but we were just talking about it there. Um last meeting, it's something critical for the same reason, we can't get grants, we can't do anything without having that storm and it's definitely been low on the total pool, so.
All right, well, could, yeah, so then maybe that's definitely an area that the waterways can.
Yep.
Give some opinions. Okay, and and I'll talk with you about that, Eric. Okay, thank you. Alrighty, and under those future projects, again, the Stormwater Master Plan, uh residents have brought up some great ideas, you know, about um. A recycling um area, you know, for yard waste and things like that. And I know people have brought up that it's been done over in Cosmopolis and. And so, you know, what about this area? And um so these projects, again, and you know, money involved, resident input involved. The Grand Canal, the city owns um some, along the Grand Canal, you know, that's about four and a half miles long, this beautiful Grand Canal. And there's properties on the grand that could be parked out, not taking down huge evergreen trees, right? But could be parked out, could be used for mirrored uh of things such as for us to get the weeds out, after they're harvested. For us to pull out a limb, I mean, a huge tree, instead of dragging it all the way through Fishhook Canal and the Grand Canal into Fishhook and now into Grant's property. Uh things like that, right? It could be also used as a public kayak launch and, you know, people just to go and sit down and enjoy along the water, right, in a small park. So those are things that we kind of have thought about. Um culverts at culverts going into the Grand Canal need some serious attention. That is one of the things I will tell you, Eric, where um I think is important to get. City members slash council members out on the water to see, right? Wow, this, from this one particular culvert, this uh all this soil and mass is coming out into the Grand Canal twenty plus feet, right?
Right.
So what is it doing in that culvert, you know, kind of thing, so. Um and then, of course, um you know, um many Bass Canal residents have. Uh talked and probably till they're blue in the face for years and years about the flow through Bass Canal and what's going on specifically with the water there. Also flow through Fishhook Canal, that is definitely um something that needs to be tackled as well. Restoration at uh the Lake Menards and Marsh Shallows. I don't know how many of you are boaters or have been out there lately, but we have sandbars that are. Kind of growing together right at that entrance from Menard into the Razor Clamberage, right in that area, okay? And and they're getting, that definitely be a navigational issue here. Um and then uh something about maybe having along with the environmental scientist specialist, whatever, but. A mini lab where they can do some serious water samples, algae samples and things like that. And soil samples and figure out what's going on with our waterways, okay? So those, that is a, went over that very fast, but I just kind of wanted to throw that out so you guys understood what it is. That we have on our future agendas and is, I'm sure you all can figure out, every single one of those things will cost money. That there's not one. The only one that didn't cost any money, others than Angie and all the work that council did to pass whatever they needed to do in order to make this happen. And taking city council out on a cruise, those are the only two things that didn't cost money. Everything else will cost money and not thousands upon thousands of dollars. Some will be very expensive, some maybe not so much. Maybe you can combine a lot of them and things like that, but it's something that we are going to continue to work on, so. You guys, um how do you guys feel about taking it all, digesting all of this? Thinking again about the title, what's a really good title? We can talk about that next meeting. And then prioritize it, get the prioritizations back to me, again, call me, scan and email it to me, whatever is easier for you. Just don't send it to everyone on the board, just to me, if you send an email. Um and I'll put it all together and then I'll bring the results back and we can go line item by line item or. Overall, however you wanna do that, but indefinitely, I wanna again do, I wanna do another presentation to council after this. Um and so get them something for twenty twenty two, right? And then we need to start just chipping away at these things and figuring out how we can move forward on them and not let them become stagnant. Alright, so.
Question.
Yes.
The survey, so in your, just thought, are you, um after you guys come up with your prioritized list? Would that survey include like your priorities and having the citizens rank the importance of those or how would that look?
Well, you know, we actually didn't, haven't got into it too much. I know, again, individually, I've talked with the members and we all kind of, I think. Have a different idea in mind, so that probably would be a meeting in and of itself. To figure out how to do it and what is the right way. How do we go about doing it, you know? Well, and I've talked to Nick about it, Sarah, and I have had a conversation about it as well. And knowing that we are city board, we can't just, you know, just go have hazard hazard with anything. That that needs to be methodically and correctly done. Um and uh but that is, that is important. I mean, other, this is the most. Attendees of residents I have seen at any meeting in the three years that I have been on the board, right? So that is awesome, because I hope when I give them an opportunity to talk to, we'll hear from them, right? Um but that is the only way we know what residents want unless they call one of us, you know, or email us or whatever.
I guess ideally, in my mind, I'm thinking, if if we could get your priorities and then get the citizens' feedback on those priorities and then the citizens' own priorities. Get that to council for part of the budget, that would help council.
Yeah, so when we go into, you know, the biannual budget this year is gonna be a big deal.
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna want money.
Yeah, but I think that would help you tremendously, if you know that you have the board support and the citizens at the same time.
Yeah, and that would be a lot more impactful when we're going through there, that yes, there is this support generally from. You know, the majority of people in the board are doing these things. This makes it a whole lot easier than just trying to pick things out of here, okay, yeah, let's do this or this.
Yeah, absolutely. That's actually a great idea. I I do need, I don't know, maybe we need to kind of think a little bit stronger and get that moved up, you know, if everyone agrees to that. And uh then, cause I know that I'll have to present to council for the uh biannual budget and it would be great to also include all of that as part of it. And then ultimately, it it's up to council to uh use the money as wisely as possible, whatever they need.
Sure, just like you've got your fourteen things, but this is our number one, this is the citizen's number one, like, and then give it to them, they'll do what they do. I know we've used Survey Monkey, I built a budget survey that they did. It's just a matter of getting it out there and, like she said, the sooner the better. You know, you can do your fifteen items and a description of what, like, how you explain that not even a trend acronym, but uh that kind of stuff and just put it on there. It it now after your next meeting even at that point. And then, like Angie said, that comparable with. With the city's request or your request would be a huge amount of information and it's pretty easy to do, once you guys figure it out. It's pretty easy for me to put some stuff together in the survey.
Okay, cause cause then they could just put it up on the city website and then educate everybody to go there.
Okay.
Make it really easy and just get as many people.
And we have so many more outlets than we did when we did the original budget uh. Given the pandemic of getting the information out there, so it might be really impactful.
Okay, all right, sounds like a plan. Okay, alrighty, so. Is everybody good with that? Okay, and again, like I said, call me, I'll come pick it up. You can bring it to my home or scan, email it. And it's only me, whatever is easier for you, but let's just say in about two weeks, right? So that way I have time to put it all together, so, right? And then I'll send it out, back out to everybody before the next meeting, so you can look at that and see what it's all about, okay? All right. Well, so that is our list of priorities. Alrighty, so next what we have is public comments. So I'm gonna go around the room here. Alright, so what I ask is, because we have a lot of folks, right, and then we also have folks on on Zoom. So please just keep it short. I don't do a timer, but you know, just please be respectful of everybody's time, please, and answer last, right? Okay, and if you have a question, we'll do our best to answer it. If not, then I um will have it available at the next meeting, okay? All right, so Tom?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity there. And I'm a little bit familiar with what we were talking about today. I don't know why, but it's something I, I know it's a Steve and and Maria, they've done a fantastic job, you guys have done a good job. But my, one of my biggest concerns has been bulkheads and flushing of the sand into the waterway. I know that's been kind of continuous uh discussion and topic, but we've got to do something because of the sand is continually closing up the waterways. It's probably particularly uh evident over in the in the uh Lake Menard area, like you mentioned. And the other thing is the water management for the quality. And I think we've got that addressed and you're working on that and I really wanna compliment you all on on your efforts to maintain communication amongst citizens and agree. And also the efforts amongst the city and the board to get the job done and good luck.
Oh, thank you. Alright, uh Mr. Goldman?
I wanna thank Angie for coming today and and giving the report. It was very informative about, hey, so thank you for your time. And I have a question, um the Fishhook Canal, there was four trees or five trees, I forget the exact quantity, what what progress has been made on that so far?
So they're still there. Um I can't answer exactly what has been uh what the progress is. Uh that's Marshall Reed, who um has that for Action. So, but I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
I will say that the, those trees, I was just down there yesterday, none of those trees, it it's not any worse than what it has been, right? So it, we're still in the same condition, right? That one tree, the the top, the alder that's down. And then two other alders that seriously leaning over, they need to get cut out. And then one more at the very, almost at the very end, so the whole part of Fishhook, which that tree is in the water, but does not. Uh obstruct actual use of the waterway. So we're still in the same position with that. Anything else?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Um alrighty, and.
Um, first, I need to meet your name.
Steve Borba.
I forgot you were, I just heard from you, so I wasn't sure. If you could clarify, I understand there's another group of people that are volunteers that go out and you know, on boats and they, you know, clear things up, is that part of this group or?
Also, it's called the Ocean Shores Fresh Waterways Corporation, they have a website, they have a Facebook. Three of our members on the advisory board are also corporation trustees, that's Phyllis Brown, Grant Schaefer, and John Pike.
Okay, um, in that case, if I had somebody that was interested in, um, volunteering when, when they go out to do some of this physical labor, who would that person contact?
Actually, I'm gonna pass that to John. Because he's the one that usually puts that work party information out there on the Facebook app.
Excuse me, one of the things that, uh, as uh, Steve said, we have, the Fresh Waterways Corporation has a Facebook page. When we get back into, we're all kind of taking a sabbatical here about working on a cold, rainy, wet waterways, um. But when the time comes, when we start up again, I would be posting on a lot of the Ocean Shores Facebook pages, looking for volunteers, and also on our Facebook, the Fresh Waterways Corporation Facebook, uh, looking for volunteers and dates and times that these work parties will happen.
Okay, thank you, I heard a neighbor that was interested in volunteering and I couldn't talk to them.
I'm sorry, I'm definitely the door knob.
I said I have a neighbor that asked me to find out because they were interested in helping.
Yeah, there, you know, as it is right now, as far as getting the word out, we are pretty limited to Facebook, uh. As much as I get the whole thing, but. We guys have a good points.
Also be aware that any volunteers who are coming out to help us, um, you do need to have the forms signed, uh, volunteer forms from the city. And they can be picked up at City Hall still? It's online. Yeah, they can come up from my office and all of this information is also on the Fresh Waterways Advisory Board page on the OSGAP website. So that does need to be filled out for new volunteers, each time you volunteer, you do not need to do it.
You mentioned Marshall a couple of times, who's Marshall?
Marshall Reed, he is the city planner, who's, uh, well, for our purposes, right, on the waterways, he is, uh, until a new public works director is hired, he is who I go to. That's it, alright, thank you, to ma'am?
Yeah, I'm here full time and then, and I've had about ten years. Um, and I'm glad that I'm here and that I was, happy I'm hired as a public, and I'm so glad to hear what's going on. My major interest is education. Um, I mean, I knew about this, I researched you one time, I looked up, you know, who's doing that, and then today I got an email about it. Uh, but there needs to be, um, thinking or education on the waterways and the care and what's going on. Uh, I just found out, um, last week that the ditches feed into the canal. I didn't know this, and, and I'm concerned about the flood. Everybody did, but I had some flooding in my house, and I wanted to lose any care of this, so I guess you guys.
Well, so. So no, we don't, we don't do anything on the front of people's homes. That, uh, that is all of, that's that whole series of culverts and ditches and all that. And I know that maybe it might sound a little confusing because we were talking about that especially, but it's that the waterways falls under that umbrella. Okay, it falls under the storm drain fund, we're just one small little line item under that. So we take care of freshwaterways, not the culverts that are, that you see the.
They lead into the canal.
Um, well, if they're, if, if they're coming into the canal, yeah, the storm drain, if they're coming into the canal, then yeah, we would be concerned about that. But we're concerned about the waterway side of it, not necessarily what it is.
So then.
Yeah, that's a whole, it's, it's a whole system.
Right, and I think I heard that I told them last.
Yes, Marshall Reed and, and John Wagner.
Cause I already learned that I didn't know who he was, okay, yeah, I'm kind of good.
And John Wagner, I think John might do a little bit more of that.
Oh, John.
Yeah, he actually does the culverts, he does all the road work and everything, Marshall's just a planner, he does the.
Oh, yes.
The, the, the main thing with flooding in Ocean Shores, when you're at the front gates, you drive in, that elevation is fifteen feet. When you're down at the marina, that elevation is fifteen feet. So what the ditches do is they're just, you know, they just go up and down, they don't flow this much this way. Yeah.
Cause I'm watering, uh, the back of my house, and I'm very troubled with our waters.
Yeah, do you live on the waterways?
No.
No.
But I'm, it gave me my name in the comments, so I don't know, I just found out where it behind my back.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of blood.
Yeah, a lot of ditches have it, you know, it is, I mean, they, they've not been neglected, just not the attention because of, you know, there used to be ten people doing it out there, or.
Well, this, the funny thing is, this is not a ditch, it's just behind my house, there's water really dark.
Yeah, so you've got grading and.
Yeah, right, I know, but anyway, that's one of the personal things I love you.
Okay.
But it's nice of knowing how the people do what they do.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, and then ma'am?
Um, I'm here just to educate myself more and find out what's in, um, happening, what's going on. I was at another meeting one time and they were, I didn't realize that was, I thought it was just one trip out of ways, but I guess there's actually other people working fresh waterways, so I've been just trying to figure out what's one in the whole.
Are you talking about, you're talking about how we, how we were just mentioning the corporation and the advisory board when it comes to the waterways, or are you talking about the culverts and?
You know, just citizens that are concerned about the waterways, so that I know.
Do you live on the water?
I do.
You do, okay, alright, which, which canal? What, canal or lake?
It's, um, right there on the overlay.
Uh, yes.
And the bridge, right?
Yes.
So up to the canal part here and, actually, they're just right across street, they're on the lake.
Okay, so you're, yeah, you're on Friendship Passage. Yeah. I love that, Friendship Passage, great, man. Alright, anything else?
Um, no, but if you're, that survey you're talking about, if you could put, um, you could educate people somehow in a little paragraph, verse, or something like that, that would be better, cause of course we live in there, I'm gonna make my aim to be best, or be fixed before, but if I have um, information as a whole, then you'd have a better way of, I'd be able to prioritize. This is my thing.
Alright, thank you, okay, and Gloria?
Yeah, I don't have a comment.
Sam?
Uh, we live right next to the overlay bridge and, uh, they had started work on some trees we've got that are right on the bank.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they got the expert, uh, I guess the city got the expert to come in and he's tagged about six of them and gave some specific instructions for two of them. Uh, they came out and chopped six foot off a branch of one of them. My understanding, they were only supposed to leave six foot of that branch. And then the, we haven't seen them again on the other tree that they're gonna take out, uh, for they did, you know, what's taken off. These were ones that, uh, the expert felt were in danger of coming down to something, anyway, um. Every city didn't take that, uh, at that point.
Well, um, when you say that they came out, was it Marshall who came out or? I remember you said that there was, when you came here once, before you said there was one that you really felt was gonna fall down, did he get that out?
No, no, and that's the one that hasn't been touched yet, that's the one they, he's uh, or recommended and it fell off, a key foot up and taken off. Uh, there was a, I was concerned about it dead one, but he said that's not gonna bother anyone, so I guess we did keep it. Um, but, uh, in, uh, John Wagner was out there and then he had these guys come out and they cut the six foot off of one end of that branch, what he's doing, pulling the tree toward my dock. And so he took six foot off, but it's land standing, they were was only leave six foot of that branch and cut it off there.
Have you been in contact with John Wagner or?
I, I assume because of all of the flooding that, what I've been seeing, so they did, did work that.
Well, do you have their emails?
Oh.
No, okay, if you go to the city website, they have their, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, uh, but if you go there.
I can give them to you, I'm really here.
Or you can contact them, and also, if you go to the Fresh Waterways Advisory page of the Ocean Shore City website,
Okay.
we have a page, Fresh Waterways Advisory Board. Right there, there is a, um, safety hazard report that you can fill out. If you fill that out, I'd be, uh, that'd be, that'd be much appreciated, alright? Again, please.
Cause I did one two years ago.
Explain everything in that, wow, okay, I, I don't know about. Yeah, explain everything you just said to the board, put all that in there, please, okay, if you would, okay? Alright.
There's been change of staffing within that two years, so it's like.
No, I mean, when I brought this up, it, it was a couple of meetings ago, I brought it up and then everybody jumped right on it, but then everything came to a halt.
They might not have understood what the issues really were, do it again.
I didn't even know you did, you might wanna do a shout out if it comes to me, that's on the website.
Yeah.
That has a report, yeah.
Yep, I got it. Okay, anything else else?
Nope.
No, okay, and sir?
Nothing.
No, okay, and not?
Uh, the gentleman that handles the volunteers, have you considered working with the high school kids? They're looking for community service to help the community, and one of our council people, Mr. Eldwin, works with the kids out there. Would be somebody that you guys can connect with?
Oh, that, that, I'm sorry, give me an interview, that has been suggested, um, with the high school kids and some other groups around town, um. You know, it's just something I think when we get ready to hit the waterways again, that we will. One of the problems is that a lot of work we do is during the summer, you know, and if there's people around, great, um. But yeah, I'm sorry, that's something we were going to chat towards, I was gonna make a couple of comments when Steve requests comments from the corporation.
Yeah, I don't give them citizen pride, please, please, it'll give them citizen pride, this is a way of, um, talking to these kids who may someday be sitting in your chair.
Right, so.
I can answer more on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we have reached out to the high school before, asking for volunteers, and there's issues with age and insurance requirements that it's just not not because of the equipment we use, we, I mean, it's, it just didn't, it didn't work.
Yeah, there's chainsaws and, you know, we have, we work off of the barges and it's kind of a smaller area to work off of, and especially when you start scapping stuff on it, so yeah, there's liability, and I know we have volunteer forms, but I'm not sure the age of, minimum age of volunteers.
They have to be eighteen years or older, it's part of our insurance.
I'm sorry, sir?
They have to be eighteen years or older.
Okay.
Yeah. That was, that was the problem.
Well, there you go, I answered it, thank you, sir.
Yeah, even, even our summer help have to be at least eighteen, we can't hire anybody in high school with over eighteen or more. And then they're out of high school, yeah, and then they're not interested.
Mm-hmm, did you have anything else, ma'am?
Well, I've talked to some of the kids.
Okay.
I walk around with the, some, some school with education, and they wanna do something, and they can even hold bags when you guys scoop in stuff, nothing dangerous, it just depends on who is the one that's directing the work that needs to be done. And I know I came to one of your meetings where they said that the volunteers are aging, well, rename this new place, so.
Well.
It's not from like a tribe.
Yeah, but you know, we still, I think at the end of the day, what we have to realize is that we do have certain guidelines we have to, uh, you know, abide by and, uh, you know, if the city requires under their insurance that they have to be eighteen, if there's some high school students maybe who are eighteen, that's awesome. Uh, but if they haven't reached that age yet, then that kind of, you know, probably just wouldn't work out in this area, right? You know, for us, um, but did you have anything else? No, thank you very much, alright, so we'll go to those who are on Zoom, uh, Don, William?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, I, um, and good day, I'm glad to hear everything's going on, you're, uh, just a couple of comments, your list is, uh, very, very long and, uh, and, and important, um, unfortunately, that one of the problems you have is, as you've mentioned, we have no public works director, and, um, as you may know, the current round of interviews did not produce one, and that job is posted again on the city website, so I guess we're still looking for, um, a, uh, public works director, but uh, there are, you know, maybe there's some things you can do, what's important is to realize that the world of Ocean Shores travels around the center, which is the budget, and, uh, the money there, that's what makes the place work, and so one of the things that I, I suggest you do, I think you said next week you're gonna get your list of, uh, projects or requirements honed down to a to, to a, to a, to better defined, I'd suggest that, um, one of the things you need to do until you have a public works director is to make sure that your interests are at the top of everybody's list or as high as possible, I can, I can guarantee you that when a Scott, when, when a, uh, public works director is hired, there's gonna be so many things ahead of the freshwaterways on that list of things that have to be done that you may, you may be a long way out, so I would suggest that maybe when you get your list done, you ask Eric to, uh, arrange a, uh, face-to-face meeting with Scott Anderson, who right now is running public works, uh, cause there is no director. And make sure that all of your issues are before him, he knows exactly what they are, where in the budget they're located. Um, cause just coming to a council meeting and making a presentation really isn't, isn't enough, so I suggest that you get your list done and, 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 uh, arrange to meet with Scott Anderson and make sure that he understands everything on your list and what has the highest priorities and see if you can get something going, I mean, I heard a few things that maybe you can get some things going on that list, for example, the North Bay Park, that's not a big deal, the money and the budget for the North Bay Park isn't to do any work, it's to have a public outreach, that's all it is, this is phase two of the public out outreach, there's no studies to be done or anything, it's, um, that doesn't need a public works director to do that, it just needs, it needs to hire a consultant to, uh, to run the show, so a lot of things could be started perhaps, and I would suggest you take your list and arrange to meet with Scott Anderson and explain everything to him and see if you can get uh, something started on a few of the items and, uh, and, and, uh, and make sure that he knows, uh, what's on the top of your list, that's what my ideas for you guys, thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, um, Bob or Carol, which one? Rose?
Are you there now?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hey, Steve? Okay. I think it's great that we have such a great turnout from the Ocean Shores residents today, some great comments. When weather permits, I would like you to put the Bass Canal entrance on your priority list, right behind the Fishhook. Because that's a very difficult entrance to get into, it's well overgrown and, and then down the road, the shallowness is an although, also another issue to address in long term, but the main Bass Canal also has some trees. in long term. But the main Bass Canal also has some trees that have been down for a few years. So those need to be addressed as well with the other tree issues.
Okay, my question is, where does the manpower come from to keep our storm drains cleaned out?
Where does?
Who does that?
Where does the manpower come from to keep, keep the storm drains clean? John Wagner.
Yes.
John Wagner in Public Works.
Okay, is he also in charge of the streets?
Yes.
And mowing the lawns and that kind of thing?
Everything.
What I'm saying is we need to have the waterways in there also, and there should be somebody managing the waterways. It's just as important as our streets and our medians that need to be mowed, whatever. We need somebody in charge of that and we need manpower. Yes, this all has to be paid for. Our city's growing rapidly. The city's taking in a lot more tax money now. So we need to do something for our waterways and we need the manpower there. You cannot rely totally on volunteers. They come once, they are exhausted and you never see them again. So there needs to be priority there.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Bob. All righty, there's nobody else online, right, Zoom? Okay. All righty. So let's see. We're done with our public comment. All right, so we'll go to, go to the order. Okay, we'll start with Phyllis.
I just wanna thank Eric for joining us. Nancy, thank you for coming. It's me and the citizens for showing interest in our group. I appreciate it.
Sam?
Uh, I think it's a good idea to try to hold the list, list down a little more, so it doesn't look as overwhelming. And I have the suggestion of, uh, changing the, into the title from need to address to priority.
All right. Anything else, Pam?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Uh, Grant?
I, I just wanna make a comment that there's about four to five thousand residents here or resident, uh, lots here. And about just under twenty-five hundred of those lots are on the waterway, the freshwater way. And of all those lots, there is about fifteen to twenty people who are trying to maintain them. And they were fighting organizations, including the city. That's when this organization came about and helped bridge the corporation and the city. And they have been able to accomplish quite a bit, but we're still, we've got three ever-ready bunnies on the boat doing most of the work. They're getting tired.
That was your place.
Yeah. And then I'm sure we've got a lot of other buddies that are getting tired too. And they, uh, they collapse, they go to the hospital, they, they have strokes, they.
Can't walk anymore.
Oh, gee. And once in a while they could show up with cookies and water and stuff, sub sandwiches, and it's a real blessing. That we have some long days, just mustering trees and getting them down and getting them out of water. But, uh, but seeing that everybody here, it's a good thing to see everybody wanting to push into waterway and to wanna do something about it and join the flow.
Anything else, Grant?
That's it.
All right. Greg? All right, John?
Oh, I'd like to add a little to us a little bit. Thank you for coming and explaining. Sarah? Eric, I am very glad to see you as our light is on and, uh, just real quickly, as far as the advisory board goes, is, you know, people say, hey, the waterways, waterways are being ignored for a while. Steve Borver stepped into the position as chair of the advisory board. And I used to be a visitor like you all, and I have seen miraculous things happen. And since I became a member, it was a long ago. And, uh, with Eric on our side, I think we're gonna get some of the things we wanna see get done.
I'm done. Anything else? You're done? Okay. Eric, do you have anything?
No, I'm just, uh, I'm, I echo John. I think it, it, this year, um, a lot of people are excited. Uh, I think the city staff and there's gonna be a lot more synergy with the boards and a lot more engagement with the, uh, citizens in the community and the city itself. And, you know, we can all agree on the important things, um, and work together to make them happen. I think a lot of things can happen.
Awesome. Great. Okay, so, um, for my, uh, good of the order, is I'm not, remember we talked about the Coastal Interpretive Center?
Yeah, the grant.
Yeah, so they were submitting for a grant. The deadline for them to submit the grant was for February. So they had asked Bruce from the corporation as the president of the corporation, and they asked me as the chair of the advisory board to give them a, um, letter of recommendation or some, uh, a letter that the partnership that they could put on, you know, as they could put first the package. I wanna read to you what I wrote, okay? Was, I'm writing this letter to support the Coastal Interpretive Center grant request for the BWET program, education program. The Coastal Interpretive Center has been the cornerstone of education and interpretive programs for the natural habitat of the Ocean Shore's community. The Coastal Interpretive Center has already completed many programs that have educated the community and tourists. The involvement and the outreach to educators has been quite remarkable and the next level of collaboration and education would be vital to do what we do. The proposal, the corp, uh, the interpretive center has for inclusion of the Ocean Shore's freshwater ways, I didn't do advisory board or corporation, would bring an invaluable asset of the community into their future education programs. The partnership could enhance the awareness of the requirements for water testing, maintenance requirements, and education of the flora and fauna which inhabit the freshwater ways. A win-win for all of them. Okay? So I made it very generic as I, we didn't have a meeting from the time she had contacted me to the time that I had to get something to her. So I made it as generic as possible. At the end of the day, what they were looking for was just a letter of support partnership that they could use when requesting the grant. And actually, you talked, uh, Donnie, about high school students. This is exactly what Nancy Eldridge, the, uh, interpretive center director was looking for. And to include them in the waterways. That might be something that if she were to get the grant, we could work something out. Uh, that's much more into the testing of the water, the soil, things like that, not doing all this crazy de-lemine and, you know, tree maintenance and whatnot. So, um, uh, that might be something that, that high school kids could work on, all right? Uh, the other thing is, is, um, at the next council meeting, uh, Phyllis and I, as the applications will go forward, Phyllis and I should be to do another term on the freshwater ways advisory board. Um, and then if approved by council, um, then Phyllis and I will take our oath following that meeting, you know, the next day or day after that. Okay? All righty. And that's all that I have. My good of the order. Okay, so let's see. Uh, it is, yes, you have.
Well, um, can you update us on filling the bar spot?
Ah, okay. So I contacted, um, somebody who had requested to be a member of the advisory board previously, and I have not heard back from that person. So, uh, we have one spot left on the advisory board. We should, we have a total of seven members. Uh, and right now, we, we only have six since one of our members, um, gave their, uh, notice not to, uh, go for another term. Okay? So if you know somebody or you yourself are interested in becoming a member of the freshwater ways advisory board, then if you go into the city website, you will see a place for boards that you can request to be on the board. You can send it to the address that's on there, which Sarah, does it go to you? It'll go to Sarah and then she'll get that to me and, uh, then we'll, the board members will talk about it and go from there. Okay, so, um, but once, Phyllis and I, if council approves that we're back on the board, then the next time that we have to fill a spot is Greg. Which is February twenty twenty-three. All right, a big old smile, right? Okay, so let's see. It is three twenty and I adjourn this meeting.